All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our Tuesday, September 8th, Council Agenda Session. Could I have approval of the minutes, please?
Move your approval.
Second.
All right. With no objections, the minutes will stand as recorded. Last week, we did read into the minutes, all of the ordinances on, well, the planning items under first reading. Does anybody have any questions or comments concerning any of the planning items? A, let's see, A through, I guess, F? Any questions or comments? If not, I do have some conditions that I plan on adding tonight under A. But we can cover that tonight at 6:30. If there's, if there's no, no questions or comments about our planning items, we'll move into resolutions under Economic and Community Development. Madam Clerk? Let's do 7A, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor or his designated need to enter into a lease agreement in substantial of the form attached with Hickson United Methodist Church for use of athletic fields by the city of Chattanooga for the purpose of a site being used as a public park, recreation grounds, or athletic fields. Subject terms of the agreement for a term of 10 years.
Councilman, or Vice Chair Smith, you had some questions on that last week. You get everything?
I did. I got everything answered that I needed. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I'm good.
7B, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor or his designated need to enter into a First Amendment to Facilities Use Agreement and option to renew in substantial of the form attached with the University of Tennessee on behalf of his Chattanooga campus for use as an indoor softball, softball facility on a portion of tax map number 146 GA 001 at 301 North Holskla Avenue for an additional term of one year.
Questions, comments? I see no hands. C, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute documents necessary for the termination of the right of reversion for property conveyed to Habitat for Humanity of Greater Chattanooga, E., for the purpose of affordable housing on the parcel located at 2026 Parkness Street, identified as tax parcel number 136 DL 004.
All right. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
There we go. Councilman Mitchell.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify what it, what's meant by affordable housing in this particular case?
Okay, let's see. Mr. Bealan? Madam Clerk, can you bring, or Vice Chair, who's, who's got the range right now?
I can do it.
Okay. Bring in Richard Bealan, please.
Working on it right now.
Hi, Councilman.
Mr. Bealan, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. The house at Habitat is going to be building there on that, that lot would be affordable for the person that it was going to. So affordable is less, no more than 30% of your gross income. So it would fit that criteria. It could be according to whomever the client was that the house was being built for.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you, Richard.
Yes, sir.
All right. Now we'll move into Human Resources. 7D, please.
A resolution authorizing the appointment of Timothy Hubert Brooks as a special police officer unarmed for the Land Development Office of the Department of Economic and Community Development to do special duty as prescribed here in subject to certain conditions.
Any questions? C, I'm sorry, E.
A resolution authorizing the appointment of Angela Lowry as a special police officer unarmed for City Court to do special duty as prescribed here in subject to certain conditions.
Questions, concerns, comments? All right. Vice Chair, go ahead and excuse Mr. Bealan, I guess, for right now. 7F, please.
A resolution approving a special exceptions permit for an existing little store change in ownership located at 512 Highway 58, Suite 108.
Mr. Noblet?
Yes, sir.
Did you send the forms over for the clerk?
I did. The council clerk now has a form here for y'all's approval on this. The resolution approving the special exceptions permit would have to be approved first, and then the form would be signed under other business this evening.
Madam Clerk, is that something you can do with electronic signatures?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. And I'm assuming you will email or get everybody's permission?
Yes, we will.
That would give permission?
Yes.
Do you submit to Councilman Henderson first?
Let's go ahead and sign him up.
Yes.
I said that would give permission. Let's see. Councilman Mitchell, did we not, we went over Public Works items last week?
Yes, sir, we did.
That's what I thought in departments. G through K, any questions, comments, or concerns about any of these items that we went over last week during committee? I'll give you just a minute to look over those. All right. I see no hands. We do have a departmental report this afternoon from Public Works. So I'm assuming that that would be Mr. Holland? If he is with us.
I do see Mr. Holland.
He is. Go ahead and bring him in.
Ms. Chair, I believe you had a couple of other folks you wanted to bring in for this also.
Okay.
Yes. Good afternoon, Council.
Good afternoon, Mr. Holland. How you doing?
I'm doing well. Thank you.
Did you have some other attendees that we need to bring in?
I do, sir. Anna Mathis will be presenting. Anna is, let me find my video. There we go. Anna Mathis from our Parks Department, she's our Outreach Coordinator, will be, will be discussing a program. And let me just kind of start by introducing what this program looks like for, for Anna. And Anna and several folks in our Water Quality Group, there's Anna now, have been working on a land management program. And what land management is for Public Works is management and expertise in forestry and really native plants, water protection, in our public and city-owned facilities and grounds. I'm going to let Anna discuss the work that she and our group have been working on over the last, maybe a year, year and a half, with several other departments and internally with other divisions. So Anna, let me, let me introduce Anna as our Parks Outreach Coordinator. She and Lynn Rutherford, who is probably also on the line, will present our land management program that they've been working on.
All right. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. I'm going to share my screen. Okay, so, yeah, thank you, Justin, and thank you, Council, for your time today. As Justin said, I'm the Parks Outreach Coordinator, and I'm representing our Land Management Working Group. Members of this group are on the call today, and they've played a vital role in developing strategies to improve and coordinate land management in our city. We hope that with this information today that the Council will lend their support as we formalize a program for improving city-owned land management. So the city of Chattanooga has an estimated 8,000 acres of lands that we either own or manage. This includes parks and green spaces, trails, landscaping at City Hall and other city buildings, such as police and fire stations, right-of-ways, and YFD centers. And within those acres, management can take on a variety of forms. You can see from our pictures here, we've got mowing grass on, and taking care of trees and parks, keeping up with trails, and then also working on our buyer retention and green infrastructure practices around the city. And the responsibility and oversight of these sites does not fall onto one department. Here you'll see the land managers and experts that we've identified so far within our city structure. While the majority does fall under Public Works, some departments are required to manage their own landscaping, such as firemen at fire departments. Additionally, planning and maintenance experts are scattered throughout the city. This can create some disparities in how our lands are managed, and so we're seeking to unify and increase interdepartmental coordination. The city is already committed to responsible protection and management of our lands. The plans, ordinances, permits, and pledges that you see here reinforce the importance of reducing pollution in our streams, increasing resiliency to protect people and property, improving air quality, improving habitat, and providing all of this to our city residents and visitors. As a major landowner, the city has a responsibility and is in a key position for ensuring that we meet these goals on our own lands, leading the way and being an example. So seeing the need for collaboration coordination, a core group of land managers and experts have come together informally to form the Land Management Working Group. As we started to meet and talk, we realized we had some similar issues we were working through. We saw some wasted resources and missed opportunities. We had assignments such as reducing pesticide use on city lands and needed help during it, and we wanted to learn from each other. And we didn't always know who the best contact was to get the answers that we needed. And we found out we're sometimes duplicating efforts and even stepping on toes. So the group you see here on this list is our core group that kind of started and came together to come up with these strategies. And we're working on getting more representations from our other departments and divisions that manage lands to join our group. So as Justin said, we've been meeting for about two years or so now. And in that time, we've brainstormed and identified our priorities and come up with these goals and commitments. So we seek to formal, formalize a working group that's recognized and engaged at all stages of projects that affect, affect city-managed lands, develop a city-owned land management plan as a resource and guiding document for all of our city operations, develop and update unified strategies, practices, and standard operating procedures, support all of our departments through a training and education program, and establish and use metrics to assess our performance. To achieve this, we propose this Phase Action Plan. We have begun identifying our baseline and are on track to complete our land manager directory, our city land inventory, our review of our current practices, and establishment of our metrics by the end of this year. We also have a guiding document that outlines our goals and priorities and have drafted a resolution that we hope the Council will consider. In 2021, we plan to focus on Phase 3, which is development of the city lands management plan and updating our guidance, guidelines, and policies. And then in 2022, we want to focus on implementation by adopting those updated SOPs and providing training and education to make sure relative staff have the resources that they need to be successful. Throughout this process, we are coordinated on our projects, continuing doing that. Of course, assess our progress and engage the public.
Got a question. Before, go back, go back to one slide. The last slide, previous slide. Second, second bar. What is B-City USA?
That's a good question. So that is a nationally recognized program that the ZERSE Society has. And it's, it's just really a pledge that cities can sign on to to say that they're going to do the work that is needed to be more pollinator-friendly. So there's a, there's a list of requirements that we were looking at, and we're, we're kind of well on our way to doing that already with developing a land management plan and policy for our cities and working on. All of the work that we do here will help us. It's just a, it's something that we can sign on to and be a part of as a city.
I'd like to know or understand more about that sometime, Justin.
Yeah, we, we'd be happy to share those resources with you if that information.
Ms. Chair, I'd like to see it, too.
Good. Maybe we share it with everybody.
Great. Yeah. Um, so speaking of ongoing collaboration, we wanted to highlight a success story of what we've already been working on that looks at the many benefits of working together on our city-owned land. I have a video for you. It might be a little choppy going through virtual, but really, it's for the pictures. I'll narrate through the video. So this shows our Understory Garden project. These gardens are used to support biodiversity for healthy trees. The plants attract native pollinators and insects that help control lichenium scale that is found on our oak trees. As you can see, this is truly a collaborative effort among divisions of Public Works, and we all benefit as these gardens support healthier trees for forestry, a beautified area and less mowing for parks, and improve stormwater infiltration for water quality. We have installed two so far. The ones that you see us installing here is down at Marion Taurine Downtown. And then we have another one at Jefferson Park, and we have plans for more. This wouldn't have happened if we hadn't put our heads together to solve the lichenium scale problem in an innovative way. And just to note that this was done before the mask mandate. So you see somewhere a mask and some not, but. So, yeah, if you guys get an opportunity to go to Main Terrain or Jefferson Park, you'll see a lot of these pollinator plants have filled in and are blooming, and it's absolutely beautiful. So I'd just like to conclude by saying, by recognizing and committing to sustainable and coordinated land management practices on city-owned lands, we can achieve a lot of benefits for Habitat, our city visitors and residents, and our city staff. Restoring meadows will provide habitat for key pollinators, a beautiful sightseeing for trailgoers. Improving what we do on our land reduces runoff and erosion and leads to healthier streams. Will provide more beautiful spaces for people to enjoy the outdoors. Will increase the skill sets and knowledge for our staff across departments and provide a better and safe working environment. So thank you for your time today, and we look forward to working with you on stewardship of our lands. That's all I have.
Okay. Before you take your screen down, I want to make sure Councilman Ledford has a question or comment.
Sure.
Thank you, Chairman. How are you? How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Is that Fiesta wear I see behind you?
It is, yes.
All right. I picked a few things up in my 50 years on this planet. So if you'll go back to your organizational chart in the beginning, I had a couple of questions on that. Let me minimize this. Okay, there, I can see. So my question is, when you talked about the properties under Public Works, under ECD, and under YFD, is your program going to overlap onto any of those properties?
Yes.
That are, that are oversighted by YFD, for example, or open spaces?
Yeah. So one of the things that we sort of, I mean, that's really kind of the key here is that we want to coordinate with all of these other sites. And really, the things that we run into, a good example is out at John A. Patton Park. We've got, we have the YFD Center. We have, you know, the playground in the park area, and then we also have some rain gardens out there in the parking lot. And so different departments and divisions are responsible for different portions of that one site. So Parks is responsible for the playground and the mowing. Water Quality is responsible for the buyer retention, and then YFD is responsible for the actual playing fields. So we just run into some times that, you know, we need to coordinate better on that. And then really bring in ECD in on sort of the planning aspects, especially when we're developing new parks and that kind of stuff.
Okay. Another question is, will you be working on any properties in conjunction with the new downtown C-Bid, or as the DCA, as they call it now?
I am not entirely sure.
Okay. You can get back to me on that one.
I will.
And then the last question is, do we have a program in place now to replace missing trees that are on city-owned property? And if that makes sense, that question?
Justin, can you answer that from a forestry perspective?
Yeah, thanks, Anna. So Councilman Ledford, to your question, any properties that, to your first question, any properties that are city parcels would be considered in, as we're planning a land management program? To your second question, related to trees and replacement trees on both the right-of-way and in city-owned, at city-owned facilities, parks, and otherwise, we do take consideration for trees annually. When we look at replacing trees, though, we do that pretty strategically. Our forestry group, previously led by Gene Hyde, obviously very strategic, now led by an expert as well, who Gene mentored and worked with Pete Stewart, is taking requests for replacement trees, and annually in the fall is the time for tree planting to take place. So I know there was, there was also lots of concern about, from the tornadoes, what we would do in the East Brainerd area, and we always take consideration for, for disasters or vehicle accidents from right-of-way, trees downtown. There's, there's a lot that goes into the management of those trees, and it's probably my fault for not highlighting that enough. It is just something that is so, it's, 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 it takes a lot of participation from the public because we receive a lot of input, but it's also very strategic and well-planned.
So if, if residents in Chattanooga, respectively in their districts, notice something, whether it's a tree, that was interesting, you mentioned a car accident. You can't replace all the trees we've lost in East Brainerd, obviously. That would be, I don't think anybody can handle that one. But is there a wave or a time of year, you said strategically? Is there a time of year in a form, like CDOT reaches out to us every year and says, hey, will you go through the district and try to identify areas? Is there a way for residents, because trees are going to be quite a large task for people to do? Is it, is it online? Is there a way to promote that? If people are out, about walking, driving, whatnot, hey, you know, that needs to be replaced? Or, and, and what would they look for, Justin, to try to identify what is a city property? Because a lot of times, you know, they might think that it's, that tree belongs to the auto parts store or the Zaxby's or whatever, and that's actually on their property. So what would be some indicators to help identify?
Yep. Good question. So part of managing a tree, an urban tree canopy is not only managing, systematically managing our trees and our street trees and parks trees, but also providing expertise to private property owners on hazard trees or trees that may be diseased. So our, our forestry crew, while they don't perform work on private property, they do provide the expertise for private property owners to make decisions about large trees. And residents can call, or property owners can call about any, any type of tree issue or that we can help with. We'll help either help them understand what we can do or give them guidance on what they might be able to do.
Very good. My last point, I would be remiss if I didn't mention it. Is Anna still with us?
Yes.
Hey, Anna, do you have any plans out in the Jack Benson Heritage Park area? We have a lot of low-lying land that's very fertile and, and a lot of grass that would look great with some of those wildflowers. I'd love to see some bees out there, as long as they don't chase Chairman Henderson too much.
Yeah, funny you should mention that. We're, we're actually working with a group called Southeastern Grasslands Initiative to kind of identify some sites on our parks where we can put some more meadows in, and Heritage has been identified as one of those sites.
Good to hear. Appreciate your hard work. Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Councilman Gilbert?
Thank you, Chair. Can we go back to that last slide?
Press on.
Yes, ma'am. I like, you're doing a great job. I'm just looking at that. It makes you appreciate what you're doing. Justin just answered one of my questions. We know the target would be all the city property that's vacant, but I know it's going to take a while to do that. But I noticed about this area on the right-hand corner where the water that was not flowing really well, that turned into some area that looks very nice. You still have a flow of water, but it don't, it's not stopping up. Do we have plans on different areas, instead of having the brush? Like we look at this picture in the right-hand corner of, because the goal, so I'm looking at these properties to change the flow of water where they can flow better and look better?
So that's an illustration of what could happen when we do better land management. So, so if we work on improving our stream buffers, putting more plants in along our streams on our city-owned properties, then we would reduce the erosion going into the stream. So that's an example of erosion on the left side. And then, yeah, so it would make it flow better. Our water quality program also works on specific stream restoration projects, and you can probably talk a little bit more to that side of things.
Okay. And we have a Sturkey's Farm off of Harrison Pike. I hope that we can put some of the wildflowers out there, because it's a beautiful park. And I think it'll be an asset if we put things like the flowers and wildflowers. So a lot of people went out to canoe and do things, paddle boarding. So I hope that we put something out that way, too. And also areas on the highway. You know, when we enter our wonderful city, a lot of times we see nothing. We see a lot of trash. We don't see the beautiful flowers that some areas have, like going towards Nashville. A lot of them have flowers and wildflowers. It looks very pretty. Hopefully, we can get to that point in the city of Chattanooga, too, and start looking at our exiting off the highway to make it a little more beautiful.
Yeah, I agree with that. Definitely.
Well, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Anna or for Justin? I do have one. Anna, if you'd go back to the organizational chart, I guess. It concerns, I've noticed there's a big discrepancy in our YFD centers on how they are landscaped. Will what y'all do bring more uniformity to our YFD centers?
That is the goal, yes.
And tell me how you will achieve that goal.
Um, well, a lot of, we have reached out to some YFD centers, and those people had to talk about how we can improve the landscaping out there. And a lot of that falls under Parks, under the Parks Maintenance Division in Public Works to do that, that landscaping. So we've started kind of improving where we already have some garden beds, and we definitely have more YFD centers on there to put more native plants in.
Okay. You're at the top of the food chain, though, right?
I, not quite, but I got the air of the people that are.
Well, according to your chart, you're at the top of the food chain. What I would like to see is more uniformity among our YFD centers throughout the city. Some look great, others not so great.
Right.
If it takes, if it takes coordinating with the Parks Department or whatever it takes, we, we need to make sure that every rec center is shown a little love. Justin, did you have a comment?
Oh, just, just that, this is the, I think this organizational chart shows the start of what uniformity would look like amongst all facilities, including Fire Department, the libraries, the YFD centers. So I think this is a good start of creating that uniformity that you're talking about. And then really looking at how we fund those in years out after we have a good process for evaluating properties that need to be improved and brought up to, you know, a better standard. And I think that's, that's the goal of this. And thank you for your input. I do understand that you are a beekeeper, and so we wanted to recognize you as, and your interest in Bee City. So we, it is fun to, to think about bringing butterflies and bees to the, to the city. And I really appreciate Anna and her working group. They've been, they've put in a lot of energy with other departments. And thank you to Fire and, and YFD and CDOT, other, other areas who have participated.
Definitely have an interest in it and hopefully reducing our pesticides that we use throughout the city. Councilman Mitchell, you have a comment?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chair.
All right, go ahead.
Um, and you know what? It might be for Justin, Anna, if you, if you feel like answering, jump in. First question is, you know, we used to have the Tree Farm that donated many trees to us every year. Have we found any, any groups at all to fill that gap? Or are we pretty much just out of pocket every year on tree replacement?
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. I don't know about, I, I'm unfamiliar with your statement about the Tree Farm and donated trees. And maybe that was something from a previous administration. I imagine that what, what Gene Hyde has put in, in place is a best practice. And I really want to, I think I would like to, I'll resurface that and figure out what that means and what your previous knowledge about that is to plug into our department. If there's an opportunity, we'd be happy to explore it.
Not sure I should go any further with that, because I probably just showed my age. The second question is, while this working group is working together, and I understand the, the theory of let's, let's get folks out of silos and work together, and I'm a believer in that, in that, and it looks like you're trying to do that right here. Has there been any functions that you see, Anna, you just mentioned, that you, you know, the, the plan would be to upgrade lands of, of YFD centers? Have you run across anything that you see that might be handled better? You know, just a, some function or, or some decision making or, or the work itself would be better in a different department than what it's in right now?
I think your question was for Anna, and I would, I would be happy for Anna to, to think through that.
Okay.
Although, you know, Anna does a significant amount of work. Her background is in environmental management. So she, you know, parks, parks maintenance and water quality all work together. I think the Department of Public Works is the environmental leader for the city. We, we think of ourselves as the, kind of the leaders of environmental programs and being able to implement those, we take a lot of pride in that. I think Anna, Anna and the Parks Group and the Water Quality Team are, are the perfect folks to lead that out.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely second that, Justin. And really, you know, the, the, kind of the point of the working group is to get all of these other people together that have a responsibility to manage their land and provide our expertise and our resources that are within Public Works and other departments. And just make sure that we're opening up those lines of communication and providing that training and education they need to do their job.
Okay, let me get more specific. Managing their lands, would that be done better in Parks Department?
That's a good question. I'm not sure I have the answer.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll keep that, that question in mind. And, and I don't blame you, even if you had an answer, if you wanted to dodge it a little bit. So anyway, this is, this is a great presentation. Thanks very much, Anna, and, and thanks for going this route, Justin. It really, I was a little bit nuts, I won't say skeptical, but I was questioning putting parks within Public Works, but it looks like that they've found a home there. And it looks like you're, you're being very supportive of them. So thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
All right. I see no other questions. Justin? Thank you, sir. Great report.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon.
You want to excuse Anna and Justin? Council, if you would, pull up your purchases for this afternoon and see if you have any questions concerning purchases. I think there are, I think we just have one for this afternoon. Questions, comments? I'm seeing no hands. So what about, if you would, now look at your September 5th agenda? Anything on our September 5th agenda that you would like to discuss at this point?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Yeah, what I have to say, September 15th agenda.
Yeah.
Questions or concerns? All right. If not, we'll move to future considerations. I'll give you just a minute to look over future considerations. Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a couple of STVRs on the future considerations. And I know that we're not doing strategic planning this week, but we are next week. And on that agenda, I believe we have something, at least becoming, getting close to being proposed on short-term vacation rentals. Are we going to have that discussion next week, hopefully?
Councilwoman Coonrod, would you like to weigh in on that? I think that's.
Yeah, sure. I asked a state attorney if he'll share the proposed legislation to council so we can get what the legislation chair can to get it on the agenda. So if, if he's willing to do it next week, that's fine with me.
Where do you go, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to send that out to you today here. Maria has a draft, at least that we started previously, and just waiting for the go-ahead.
Okay. Ms. Lydia, would you add that to our strategic plan and agenda for next week?
Yes, sir.
Under future legislation?
Okay.
Okay. Councilman Ledford?
I had a question about the transfer of property in Enterprise South. Someone can follow up with me on it?
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair, that's going to be, it's going to be included in the ECD committee presentation next week.
Then I'll, I'll wait for that. Thank you.
All right, yeah. And that was, that was the reason I had my hand up, Mr. Chair.
Okay, very well. I do want to make you aware, somehow it did not make the three-week agenda, but I'm making you aware of it now. We will have a Form-Based Code appeal that will be heard in three weeks. Let me see what date that falls on. I think it'll be the 22nd. We will have a Form-Based Code. And Mr. Attorney, if you could make sure that next week it gets on the two-week agenda, please, sir?
I will, yes, sir.
Okay. All righty, let's see. I think that concludes all of our agenda items for this afternoon. Is there any other questions or comments, concerns that need to be brought before this body before we go into our Budget and Finance Committee? Okay. I see no hands at this time, so Councilwoman Burris, at this time, I'm turning the floor over to you, ma'am, for our Budget and Finance Committee meeting.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Chair. Called order the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. We did have minutes from our last meeting. Have a motion for approval, please.
It's approved.
Second.
Second, thank you. So I sent all the material we're going to use today out to you previously so that we can have a good conversation. The Budget and Finance Committee has four areas that we're going to cover. We have enabling legislation, which is the proposed, to proposed resolution, and then funding proposals. What I would like to do is go over all of those with you and, and make a couple of corrections. And then we'll get started with number one. If you will look at Proposed Resolution Two, please change tax year to 2020 instead of 2021. It's collecting funds to be used in 2021. I got a last-minute change, excuse me? Was there, okay. The, the, I got a last-minute change from Administration. And we're going to the Tennessee, Southeast Tennessee Development District for Administration of the Cities. The word is Artist's Work Program. Here, after we have our education session today on the items here, we already have scheduled a public hearing for the 15th. It had to do with 10 days before the la, the last vote. However, any of this is up for change if you, if you want it. In other words, this is our first attempt. We're following our own procedure. Administration has bought a number of things to us. It's up to us to decide when we want it on the agenda, if we want it on the agenda. And we're following the same process we did with the budget itself. So this is the education session. Any questions about the process? Okay, I see none. So what you have here, the first proposed resolution is authorizing an inter-local agreement with EPB relative to Hamilton County School EdConnect funding commitment. That's the enabling legislation. Down below, we're talking about the funding for that. And we're talking about appropriating 1.5 million from reserves to EPB to fund the city's portion of the Hamilton County School EdConnect initiative. We're going to start with that, and we're going to start with a presentation, if you will, an education presentation. And then any questions you have, please. For the EdConnect, remember, the Administration brought forth that they want to appropriate 1.5 million from reserves to this program, that hopefully Jill Levine, I think, is there? And Evan Freeman, if you would bring them on, please.
Jermaine Freeman?
Councilwoman, Jermaine Freeman also has his hand up, I think, maybe to.
Yeah, that's fine. I know about EPB and Hamilton County Schools. I definitely want them, and then from anyone from Administration that wants to speak as well. So Jermaine, are you introducing the topic and then turning it over?
I am, thank you so much. Thank you so much, Madam, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. And as you stated today, I am joined by Hamilton County's, Hamilton County Schools Director of Innovation, Jill Levine, as well as EPB's Director of Government Relations, Evan Freeman. And Lydia, am I okay to share my screen for a brief presentation?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. All right, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So on Wednesday, July 29th, 2020, HCD Superintendent Dr. Brian Johnson, along with Mayor Burke, Mayor Coppinger, and EPB Board Chair Warren Logan, announced a once-in-a-generation opportunity for our city to expand high-speed internet for all students on free and reduced lunch as a way to bridge the digital divide. This opportunity has been made possible through the great work of EPB because of our partnership. As all of you know, EPB is a city-owned utility. And because of EPB's great work and extensive work of laying fiber optic cable and smart broadband infrastructure across our city, this opportunity became possible. This, the, the need to utilize and to take advantage of EPB's infrastructure is more pronounced than ever before because of the urgency created by COVID-19 and the reliance on digital access, distance learning, and virtual learning. Because of the fact that HCD is, like many school systems across the state and across the country, are having to use distance and hybrid learning models to make sure that students can get access to the internet as a way of maintaining social distancing because of COVID-19, it becomes all the more essential that all households and all children have access to, to, to internet that they can afford. So in partnership with HCD, which is, which was already working on ensuring a one-to-one ratio to make sure that all middle school students, as well as all students that attend our future-ready institutes, have access to a device so that they could take advantage of the internet if they, if, if, if it became available to them. According to census data, an estimated 15,000 students only have access to the internet because of cell phones and because of cellphone connections, which, as we all know, is not the same as having Wi-Fi or a hard-wired internet connection within your home that you can use a device for. And so why is the city participating? Well, since the Burke Administration first entered office back in 2013, we have searched for ways and opportunities to allow all of our citizens and all Chateaugans to take advantage of and leverage the high-speed broadband offered by EPB and to increase access to education. And so programs like Baby University and rebranding the Enterprise Center and Tech Goes Home and the, the early digital equity work that we did in Eastlake, as well as the deployment of EPB Quick Connect locations, these are all things that we have done from the city's perspective to weigh in on education because we understand that these long-term investments help to improve outcomes for all of our citizens over time. And so, as I mentioned, we launched Baby University back in 2014 as a way to improve educational outcomes for children between the ages of zero and three years old. Because research shows that that's the, the time period where a child's brain does, does most of its development. And so we felt like we needed to move in and to weigh in on that space by impacting it through Baby University. And also in 2014, we led an effort to refocus and to rebrand the Enterprise Center so that we began to leverage EPB's fiber optic network to build the digital divide. So today, when you look at the, the strategic goals of the Enterprise Center, you will see that one of their strategic goals is expanding digital equity so that all of our citizens have, have, have the ability to access the, the fiber optic network and infrastructure that, that EPB has provided. And then supporting programs like Tech Goes Home and. And then supporting programs like Tech Goes Home and Coding Academies and the digital equity work that we did in the Eastlake, these are all programs that have been part of the city's effort to make sure that we bridge the digital divide and we increase digital access and equity for all of our citizens. So fast forward to March of this year, as schools were beginning to suspend classes and as the city of Chattanooga was passing our very first executive orders that were emergency executive orders due to COVID-19, Mayor Burke and I actually walked over to EPB's offices and we sat down with EPB's CEO, David Wade, in his office. And it was in that meeting that Mayor Burke asked EPB to use every available resource at their disposal to make internet accessible to all families so that kids would have access to the internet for distance learning. The mayor realized very early on in the pandemic that it was going to be extremely important for all families to have access to, to digital learning. And he realized that as schools begin to cancel, that this was going to be a huge issue. And so at that time, I'm not sure that EPB honestly knew how to meet the mayor's challenge, but in true Chattanooga fashion, EPB did not shy away from the challenge and they met the issue head-on, and they convened a group of community partners to help them think through the problem, including Hamilton County Schools and the Enterprise Center. And so with the help of the Enterprise Center, they began a process of using digital mapping to, to identify areas across our city where there were, where internet access seemed to be lacking based on population density and socioeconomic levels. Through a collaborative process and with the help of public funds from the City of Chattanooga's Industrial Development Board, along with matching funds from the Benwood Foundation, EPB was able to launch what, what we called the EPB Quick Connect Locations in areas across the city to provide public Wi-Fi at churches, schools, and community centers that people could drive up and use. So people would stay in their car and they could get access to the public Wi-Fi from their cars and still be safe through social distancing. Today, EPB has launched over 100 EPB Quick Connect public Wi-Fi access points, including at places throughout the city, including Chattanooga Housing Authority properties like the Greenwood Terrace Apartments, the Emma Wheeler Homes, the Villages at Alton Park, Eastlake Courts, College Hill Courts, and the Bayberry Apartments. So after installing the EPB Quick Connect Locations, EPB recognized that there was an opportunity to take a giant leap forward, and they recognized that this opportunity of expanding broadband access with the help of partners would be critical in, in, in our attempts to bridge the digital divide and to increase digital equity. And so that brings us to HCS EdConnect. HCS EdConnect is, again, a once-in-a-generation opportunity for the city of Chattanooga, along with community partners, to help EPB in their efforts to secure $8.2 million for the purposes of deploying infrastructure across our city that would, that would be used to provide internet at no cost to families, to their households. So we're no longer talking about public Wi-Fi networks that we described in the EPB Quick Connect Locations. We're talking about actual in-home connections for families that qualify for free and reduced lunch. And so the city of Chattanooga, if the city council approves, would be joining and coming alongside Hamilton County Government, the Hamilton County Department of Education, the Smart City Venture Fund, and the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee Foundation in terms of putting forth a financial commitment to help EPB secure all of the infrastructure needed to get access to homes. This would help approximately 28,500 students across our area that are between the ages of kindergarten and 12th grade who qualify for free and reduced lunch. To date, and I think Jill can talk about this a little bit more in just a second, but over 3,900 households have already signed up, which includes over 6,000 students. So this is obviously going to be a popular program, and it obviously is a game changer in terms of making sure that all of our students have the ability to get access to the internet. The internet speeds will be 100 megabits per second, which gives people the ability to, to, to participate in video presentations through distance learning, and those speeds are asymmetrical, meaning the speed to download something, to download a file and to upload a file are exactly the same. And there is no charge to qualifying families for 10 years or until the family's youngest child graduates high school. Now, keep in mind, that also means, though, that the families must qualify. They must re-qualify for free and reduced lunch each year. And so when we think about Gig City, we often think about the investors and the entrepreneurs and the Innovation District and all of the economic growth that we have seen as a result of leveraging our, our Innovation District and leveraging the, the EPB gig. But this is also Gig City. The pictures that you see here, these are people in Tech Goes Home classes. These are people, these are our, our citizens who are learning to use computers for the first time, learning to use, learning new IT skills, and this is what we have the potential to, to expand on even more through, through the process of making HCS EdConnect available to all of our students. This is a monumental effort to bridge the digital divide, and we haven't even scratched the surface of the potential that we can tap into from kids across the city as they tap into high-speed quality internet with a real device and not a cellphone with a real connection to the internet in their home. Kids from some of our areas that have seen the least amount of internet access, especially in District 7, 8, and 9, will have the chance to benefit from this. Who knows what possibilities await our community, not just in education, but entrepreneurship, economic growth, health outcomes, because families now have an opportunity for telehealth visits. This is what Gig City looks like. Few other cities have accomplished what we're doing now, and this is what we are asking you to support. And with that, I'll take any questions.
I have one. And I guess I'm, I'm the first one. Your slide that showed all the people who had signed up?
Yes.
They've signed up for what?
So they've signed up for HCS EdConnect. So they are signing up to actually get an in-home internet connection with the high speeds that we just described in the presentation. So that's, that's, that's not public Wi-Fi. That's a personal, that's a personal access in their homes.
Okay, and so my question is, does that also include the computer?
No, the computers are separate, and Jill can, can talk a little bit more about that, and she can talk about the, the, the one-on-one goals that the school system has. But I wanted to share that, to share with the council that this is part of a broader effort of ensuring digital literacy and digital access for, for every.
All right, Jermaine, my question is, it's a great, good program, all of that. No, no disagreement there. Have these people signed up for something that we haven't even agreed to fund? That's, I'm trying to, is.
Well, so the, the, there is funding that's already been secured, and so EPB can move forward, and they can start the process of trying to make internet available for, for people based on the funding commitments that they already have. And so they've already gotten a million dollars committed from the Smart City Venture Fund, 1.5 million dollars committed from Hamilton County Government, an additional million dollars from the Hamilton County Department of Education, and an additional million dollars from the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee Foundation. And so, obviously, it would help them a lot for, for, for our funding to be there as well, but EPB has the ability to go ahead and get started based on those funding commitments alone.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jermaine, Evan, or Dr. Levine, I'm not sure which one wants to answer this, but I was during your presentation kind of thinking about the ancillary benefits of this, and do you see some potential for households having in this internet access to benefit from maybe even exploring other educational opportunities and/or career paths?
Yeah, why not? I mean, if you've got access to the internet, as you all well know, the internet is like a road. So when you get it, when you get your first car and you have the ability to drive down the road, you can explore whatever road your desire takes you because you now have a car to go down the road, or you have access to public transportation. The, the, who knows what the possibilities are with, with kids having access to high-speed internet? And our hope from the administration side, and I, and I will stop talking so that I can give, give Jill a chance with the mic. Our, our hope, though, is that our kids blow this thing wide open and they start new companies, and there's new educational achievements, and, and just all kinds of new development and collaboration and learning that can happen because of this program. Jill, do you want to add anything?
Well, sure. Thank you all so much. I mean, I think, I think what's important to know is that this is groundbreaking, not just locally, but nationally. And what sets us apart is that it's a 10-year commitment. No one else is doing that nationally. The speed, the 100 megabits per second, and the symmetrical upload and download, the speed of all of it is faster than everyone else. And we're attempting to, you know, we've identified that we have 28,000 students who don't have high-speed internet in the home and who also qualify for free or reduced lunch, and we're trying to reach all of them to make sure every one of them has access. When we closed down school in March, we realized very quickly that the digital divide is a real thing. I mean, we knew it, but to, to really experience it, but some kids were cut off from learning, in a sense, because they didn't have access to high-speed Wi-Fi, and everything now is video. It's like this, it's Zoom calls. I mean, imagine if you were on this call right now and it was going in and out, or you had to drive up to a pole outside somewhere to be able to participate in this call. That's what, we were losing kids because they couldn't connect. So this program is powerful, and we're already hearing from families who struggled with connecting to learning last spring, who are now, you know, fully able to learn from home if that's what they need to do or to do their homework. So it's, it's really been tremendous so far, and just to give you a couple statistics also, we've, we're doing continuous outreach to our families to, you know, try to encourage them to sign up. We've had 13,555 families so far answer our survey and say, yes, I want this program, and, you know, yes, please tell EPB to, to, you know, be in touch. And so we know that the need is out there, and we just have lots more to do.
Thank you. Evan, do you have something to add?
Sure, and, and just to, one, one thank you all for the opportunity to, to speak with you today, and, and just to piggyback on Jermaine's comments and to your question, Councilman Ledford. I, I think, big picture, I mean, if, if you're thinking about the, the homes that don't have ac- and access or these low com- low-income homes probably have, you know, the worst health outcomes and, and relationships with, with access to healthcare, and just thinking about, you know, telehealth possibilities, thinking about workforce opportunities, and, and being able, you know, most job applications are online, and, and just to think of, of families that don't have to go, you know, visit the library or, or make a special trip to go fill out a job application. So I mean, the, the educational piece, which is that what we're talking about now is, is most important, but I, I think there's a lot of, a lot of good side effects to having that internet in the home.
Okay, and we have a couple of questions. Chairman Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jermaine, if I've read and understand this right, the $8.2 million commitment is for infrastructure.
Correct.
So, so what, what kind of ongoing cost for the next 10 years will be associated with this problem, problem, with this program? And what, what could the city be looking at in future monies to fund it?
Well, our commitment is, is a one-time $1.5 million. But Evan, do you want to talk a little bit about the, the future commitments?
Yeah, yes, and, and I'll talk a little bit about the funding and how we got to 8.2 million. That, that number, so, so, you know, because we're municipal electric, we're limited by state law too, so we can't, we can't give away service. We have to charge what it costs us. So we, we, for the, to cover the 17,000 households to install a O and T device provider router, in some places having to, to build out the fiber connection to the home because they haven't had access before, it, that's where that $8.2 million came from. So we, we have to raise that on the front end so that way we're not giving away service. Going forward, we have an agreement with the, with the school system that between the, the school system and EPB, those ongoing costs will be covered per year, which is about, I think it's around $710,000 per year for ongoing costs.
Okay, so it's a one-time cost, just to get things started. And Councilman Led?
Yes, ma'am. I had a follow-up question, based on a question you actually proposed earlier, and that was the hardware question that maybe Jill can ask or answer on, you know, without the, without the hardware on the other end, the, the, the speed isn't worth much, as from what I understand.
Right, so fortunately, over the last two years, we've gotten to be one-to-one in grades six through 12, meaning that every sixth through 12th grader in the district has a Chromebook that they use at school and can also take home. We, you know, as this sort of played out last March and April, we went through every building in the school and tried to get as many out the door as we possibly could to as many kids, so several thousand more Chromebooks. We even pulled Chromebooks from one school and brought them to the next to try to get them in the hands of kids. We also, the Community Foundation helped us to raise some money to purchase more Chromebooks that we actually deployed to the Boys and Girls Clubs this summer to use as like virtual learning centers. Those have just come back, and we have an order of, I believe it's 6,000 Chromebooks on the way. They've been on the way for quite a while, and we're just, you know, waiting for them. And as you can imagine, every district in America is trying to get devices right now. So that will cover us completely, grades three through five, and then we're, we're starting fundraising now for K through two. So there's still a bit of a gap in what we can provide, but keep in mind also, we have about 60% of our kids back in school at this point. And so the need for, you know, devices at home is a little bit less than what it was in March.
Very good. Thank you for that update.
Any follow-up, Councilman Ledford, or is that?
I'm good. I'm excited about the benefits. I'm very excited about the benefits.
All right, so what you're getting educated on is the proposed resolution, which is the enabling. Are there any questions about the appropriation?
Madam Chair.
Excuse me?
May I ask about the appropriation?
Several here. Mr. Mitchell hasn't spoken yet, so Councilman Mitchell?
Um, not precisely on the issue, but Jill, you brought it up, and I hope you're doing well. The, what's K through two going to cost?
Um, well, every Chromebook costs $412. Once we, like, have them processed, they're sort of like a white glove treatment that the companies do to get them up and running for us. We have about 10,000 students in K through two.
So about $40,000?
No, um, hold on, I'll get my calculator out to get the exact amount, but, um, I don't want to tell you the wrong thing.
You can get back to me on it.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's roughly for a little over 4 million.
Okay. Oh, I dropped some zeros there, didn't I? Okay.
I think so, but now you're making me question my math publicly. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, you can get back together about those figures, few zeros difference. Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, and this question for Evan and Jill. When dollars in hand, how soon before everyone that, that is included in this program is up and running? They have a Chromebook, they have internet access, the whole package. How soon?
Evan, do you want to say that?
Yeah, as far as the, the bill, a, a couple factors. And, and our goal originally, when we're putting this together, was, was about the end of the year. That, that's not a hard goal, simply because, I mean, some of the factors that we think about is, is one, some areas have to build out, and then two, a lot of the families, you know, we, we have to have the families respond, and the families actually have to agree for us to come in. some areas have to build out. And then two, uh, a lot of the families, you know, we, we have to have the families respond and the, the families actually have to agree for us to come in the home and we have to set up and schedule installation. Um, so that, that's, that's one of the variables that are there, but as soon as possible, like we, we've already installed, uh, back to Jermaine's presentation, um, over 3,900 homes and, and 6,100 students that, that as of today are, are on EdConnect. Um, and, and, uh, I know the school system, we're continuously doing outreach and we're doing outreach to some of those parents, um, to, to get them to, to schedule their installs.
So no, no, no goal in mind? I mean, you, you still, you still think by the end of the year, everybody has infrastructure?
Our original goal was, was, was by the end of the year, but, but again, us dependent on, on families and, and response times.
Okay. And, and Jill, as far as everyone having a Chromebook, what are you, what's the school system thinking?
Um, well, we originally, the, the 6,000 that are on their way, we originally heard mid-September. The date seems to fluctuate a little bit. That's why I, I can't commit because it just depends on when this shipment of Chromebooks arrives. When it does and we get those out and processed, um, that will, that will cover third through 12th grade. And so, and then we've got some fundraising to do for the kindergarten through second. So I, I don't have a timeline on the fundraising at this point. If I say end of October, I'm afraid that if those Chromebooks don't come in time, I won't be telling, you know, I'm, I'm a little nervous committing to a date just because we don't know when they're arriving.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Ledford, that's you again, or is that?
Yeah, this is my last question.
Okay.
First, thank you. Uh, Jermaine, can you talk a little bit, um, on appropriations? Can you talk a little bit about, uh, where we've identified the reserve funds?
Yeah, I think that's, that's going to be addressed sort of later on, uh, as we, uh, through our, through our presentations. So I think, uh, Dr. Burris, it's going to be in like bullet point number four on your, on your list. Um, but we have identified it in reserves. Uh, and I think Ms. Madison will, will speak more to that point.
Very good. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Burris.
Sure. Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you, Chair. Um, we've known that this digital divide has been an issue for quite some time. And it's really sad that it had to take the pandemic to happen for anybody to actually care. Um, but what I don't like or care to hear is how we're constantly playing on poor communities. Don't get me wrong. I think that the EdConnect is a great idea, but I think it's fair to say that we don't have to continuously play on poor communities predominant and mostly the black poor communities to make it seem as if it's urgent to make sure that this specific target group of people, uh, we want to make sure that they have access to the internet. Because I live in Eastdale and we're just going to be honest about the conversation. Everybody that live in Eastdale is poor. Everybody that live in Eastdale, they, they may, some may choose to buy or purchase internet and some may choose not to. And I'm one of those ones who choose not to purchase internet. And so that doesn't mean I can't afford it. It doesn't mean that I don't want to provide the access. It's a choice that I make. And then when we're talking about the Chromebooks as if, well, we're going to fundraise to make sure that these poor people have access to Chromebooks, when everybody in my neighborhood walking around with at least $200 pairs of shoes. So for me, I want to make sure that it's clear that we want to make sure that everybody have access to it. It doesn't matter if you poor or you just choose not to purchase internet. It doesn't matter. Because now our schools, pretty much everybody is on free or reduced lunch. You don't know who, who can afford to pay for it now or not. Everybody is getting free lunch. So I think that's important. That's, that's a message that we need to share. I mean, I, just for me, that line of Victor, the line of continuously to victimize these marginalized communities, like I just have an issue with that. It is a great, it is a great opportunity. It's been an issue for quite some time and I'm glad that finally somebody said, hey, we're going to do something about it. And that's the real issue. It's the issue in that people can't afford to. Uh, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anything else about that proposed resolution? We'll be getting to funding in a minute. Remember, at the end of this meeting, the question from me to you is going to be for each one of these, are you ready to put them on the agenda? And you may not be, I don't know, but keep that in mind. All right, let's move on to, um, you know, let's go down to, there was one question that got left hanging here. And if you go to the operations budget amendment, it's the funding for the resolution. B, appropriate 1.5 million from reserves to EPB to fund city's portion of this project. And that'll bring closure to the whole discussion. And I believe Jermaine, you said Daisy was going to speak to that?
Yeah, I think, uh, Ms. Madison would be in a better position to speak to the exact.
Okay. And would you please excuse this vibe and? Evan, Jermaine, do you need to stay on?
I can if you'd like.
Why don't you stay on? Why don't you stay on? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Madison?
She's on her way.
Okay, good. Hey Daisy, we've discussed the, uh, proposed resolution part, the enabling legislation, and answered a bunch of questions, but one question has to be answered by you, and that has to be B of number four. And the question was, uh, appropriate 1.5 million from reserves. Would you discuss that further? How's that? Where's that coming from?
Thank you, Council, and happy to. Um, as you know, whenever we talk about reserves, uh, we are talking about funds that are available from, uh, excess revenues that were not spent from the prior years and that's cumulative in years. Well, as of last, uh, as of June 30, 2020, that year, as you know, was pretty shaky toward the end as a result of the pandemic. However, um, because of the timing of the, the pandemic, to what the end of the year and the timing of the revenues coming into the cities, uh, for accounting purposes, that fiscal year that we have just ended, the preliminary, I don't know, the numbers suggest that we were better off, um, than we had anticipated, as we went into the pandemic. And, um, the reason being, however, is as soon as the pandemic hit in March, this administration basically put in, uh, spending restrictions in place, which essentially put a freeze on hiring, as you all know. And, uh, the department administrators were very diligent in managing the dollars that they spent, uh, only for those items that were absolutely essential. As a result, the cost, uh, the operating expenses for FY20 were less than had been budgeted. And the revenues, on the other hand, were not, uh, came in pretty much on target. Again, that had to do with the fact that it took a time, a little time for the results of the pandemic, pandemic to come into play. As you know, uh, the federal government put in extensive stimulus, uh, legislation that allowed, uh, local residents to continue to spend. So thereby, therefore, sales taxes were not as immediately impacted as, uh, we would have expected. And due to the timing of those sales taxes recycling back to the city, uh, the real hit is delayed by, uh, two months and in some cases, three months. Um, and the biggest source of revenue that we have is property taxes. By the time the property, the pandemic hit, most individuals had already paid their property taxes. And property taxes by its very nature is the last item is much slower to be impacted by slowdown in the economy. It just takes a little bit longer to catch up than sales taxes because people naturally will pay, uh, to preserve their homes. That's a priority for them. So because of that, FY20 operations were favorable. And therefore, there were reserves that could be used on a one-time basis for a project such as this.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Ledford, does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am. I think it, it does. And Daisy and I have talked a little bit about it in the past, uh, last week in, in, in addition. So I appreciate that explanation.
All right. I seen, thank you, Daisy. I see no other questions relative to that one proposal. So if you're okay, let's move on. And the next one is, has to do, uh, with the bid. The proposed resolution is to accept the current year C-Bid financial report, approve the C-Bid proposed, uh, fiscal year 2021 budget, and authorize the city's interim treasurer to collect the C-Bid special assessment fee for the next year, uh, which it would be 2020 for 2021. And we have with us, uh, Steve Brooks, Gordon Stalins and Steve Hunt, if you would bring them in. Now again, you've got all this information. And gentlemen, um, we want to give full attention, but I don't know that we need that full presentation that we already have. So before we get started, so that they have the opportunity to hit the high points, are there any questions, since you all have all the material that you have of presenters? And, uh, Mr. Henderson?
Thank you, ma'am. This is a process question and probably one for the attorney. Can we wrap up A, B, and C all in one resolution?
Yes, sir. I believe you can. It's a question of whether you, you want to or not, but yes, it is included in one resolution to be resolved. And the, uh, aspect of all of these are authorized by your ordinance that was adopted in 2019 regarding the creation of the C-Bid and your amendment to that ordinance that created, uh, the requirement for at least the authority of the city treasurer to collect the assessment. There was a provision in the ordinance that was passed in September of last year, whenever Hamilton County got out of the ability to collect that, uh, that the, uh, assessment would be reviewed in one year for continuance. But it is, uh, provided for in your ordinance and the review process is provided within your ordinance.
So the answer is yes, we can.
Not to answer too legalese, but yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, Councilman Henderson, I looked at that too. We can do it. It's, as some of you suggested to me, it's whether or not we want to do it. Those are the three aspects. And you can join them together or not. Today is just getting us educated on. We'll be getting educated on, uh, all three aspects. I want to know if you have any specific questions. Councilman Gilbert?
Yes, I think the last time they came and spoke at council, uh, I brought up about the nonprofits. Is nonprofits getting charged?
I, I'm sorry, your hand was in front of your.
I said that the last time we spoke with this group, I asked a question about nonprofits. Is nonprofits being charged? Like the church, uh, some other nonprofits now?
All right. So you want to know if the nonprofits are being charged, Councilman Ledford?
Same question.
Same question? Um, all right. So let's turn it over to the expert, Steve Brooks. Do you want to start or who wants to start?
Sure, I can, I can start and answer that. So there's been four nonprofits who have applied for the hardship waiver. Um, we've been having ongoing productive meetings with them and we're working towards a resolution. So as of today, they have not been charged, but we are still meeting with them and working towards an agreement on, um, the resolution for the special assessments.
Other questions that you have?
Yes, I still have one. You say you have a resolution trying to come together. Do you know when that's going to happen?
We're, we're, we were hoping to have it, uh, for this month to bring to our board or to go to our finance committee to make a recommendation to our board for approval. Um, but it's looking like it's going to be in October, uh, before that will happen because we're just still having some discussions with a, a few of the nonprofits. We've heard from two and we're waiting to hear back from two more.
Madam Chair, this will be, it's, this is in October. He gonna have an answer. This coming up soon before October, correct? For us to vote?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further there? All right. Then let me ask the council, how do you want to handle this? You've reviewed all the material. Do you want a full presentation on the budget? Do you want a full presentation on expenses to date and projections? Do you want to have a full discussion on, um, on whether or not we should be collecting this fee? Direction? Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you, Chair. I just got a question of, just for clarity on my end, because last year, when they presented the map and we went through that whole shebang, it was a big thing. Um, and they had the overlay of it, but then they also, we had churches and folks who sent letters and who spoke and said that they, they was okay with being in the bid. They was a part of it. Did anything change with that? Did those nonprofits get removed out of it? Did they, did the churches get removed? Because our council people are asking those questions. I didn't see a new map that, that came and we voted and said we was accepting the map how it was. So did, I just need clarity on my end if something changed or not.
Uh, nothing has changed, um, Councilwoman Coonrod. Uh, the, the churches are still inside the bid boundaries and so are the other two nonprofits, which is the YMCA and United Way. So the boundaries have not changed since the presentation, at least that I'm aware of, that have been changed. They've been the same since I arrived here in April.
Are they, they good? They're still good with being a part of it or are they, is there some issues, complaints coming from them? Do they want to be removed?
Uh, they, um, we're still working with them and explaining the, um, the different ordinances, uh, with, with the nonprofits. Uh, they, they do have the right to fill out a hardship waiver form and have it reviewed by, uh, the financial committee, um, then which makes a recommendation. Uh, and so we're still going through all of that with them. Um, so that's where we're at with the nonprofits, still having those conversations, still communicating it with them. Um, so I hope that, that, that answers your question, but the boundaries have not changed.
You good, Councilwoman?
I'm good. Cause I think last time we asked you all that question, like we could edit the boundaries, but last time it was brought up, it was a whole big thing about it. Uh, so just wanted to.
Okay. Well, our, our, our purpose is threefold here. That is questions about their budget, question for next year, questions about uh, their expenses this year and their projections, and then the decision about whether or not we are collecting the fees going forward. And let's go to, uh, Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and I'm not sure who this, uh, Steve or, Steve or Steve. So, a, a, and I looked at, uh, briefly looked over, uh, what you sent us. I couldn't tell, how, how many employees do you currently have off of the, off of the, uh, fees that you're collecting?
In, including myself, 16.
Okay. So 16 dependent on basically these fees at, at, at this point, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, and, and I guess Daisy, um, would need to weigh in on this. Uh, we are, I think, collecting a fee for, um, for the bid, for, for collecting the money. Um, are we, do, do we know, uh, in this review, do we know if that fee is enough? Is it costing us money? What, are we breaking even?
Yes, Councilwoman, we are collecting 2% of every dollar that we collect on their behalf. And, um, we get to keep those dollars and make them part of general fund. Uh, as a part of the program, we have not had to add any additional staff. We really have been able to absorb this cost operationally with our existing staff. Uh, any cost that we have is either one time or minimal cost for paper. And the hope is that they, this will, if we do this, it will be on the existing tax bill. So there's no additional cost related to that printing.
Okay, so, I mean, at worst, we're breaking even. Is that, is that what?
We should be doing better, but yes, at worst.
But at worst, we're breaking even.
Yes.
Okay.
Daisy, do you want to, do you want to share the, what we've made on this thus far?
Well, actually, I don't have those in front of me, but I did share them, I think, with the council. They have assessed around $900,000 and they've collected around eight. So essentially, we've collected around $16,000 for the current year.
And what was the cost to add them to our tax bill? That to design the new program?
Less than $5,000. It was between three and $5,000, one-time costs.
Okay. Steve Hunt, you've been wanting to speak, so please do.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like the council to know that I had never, when accepting the chairmanship of the C-Bid, I had not thought of it as a small business. But as the chairman Henderson pointed out, we now employ sixteen Chattanoogaans. And we, we rent space from a Chattanooga landlord. And we are making a difference down here in the district. So as a new small business that you folks have enabled with this and the property owners have agreed to fund, we're all in it together, so to speak. But I would tell you that we've made a big difference. And one thing that I have been incredibly surprised by are the social aspects of the bid's functioning. Steve, I've been here 57 years. I'm a, I'm a lifer here in Chattanooga. And Steve Brooks is brand new coming in and he knows more people in our community to get answers for those disadvantaged folks here. And he brings a wealth of experience and knowledge in that. And one thing that often gets swept away is how the C-Bid will help those, anybody in the district, whether it's a property owner, a merchant, a citizen, or any disadvantaged person. And my eyes have been really opened to the good work that Steve and his team of ambassadors have done. So just one of those things, it's hard to measure. But you know, we, we have a, we have a smart app that tells us how many trash bags we've gone through and how the, how many graffiti tags we've removed and all of that is in your report. But one of the things that is sometimes overlooked is the, is the good help that we're giving to disadvantaged folks in the district.
Thank you. Councilman Gilbert, you have, is that an old light or a new question?
New question. Since the city has suffered on COVID-19, have your organizations adjusted any of their fees because of COVID-19?
Councilman Gilbert, if I may, I would tell you that this went out last October before the world knew what COVID-19 was. And I don't know the percentage, but a fair number of folks pay their property taxes before December 31st. And most others pay it at the end of February before it becomes delinquent on March 1st. So similar to Daisy's report on the city's function, we kind of, our revenue came in and was paid, money was paid before COVID took hold of, of the world.
But the question is, are you going to adjust your payment for future because of COVID-19?
Our board would certainly consider working with folks if they are disadvantaged by COVID. We have not heard from anyone in that regard.
So I know that they say downtown and taxes for hotel motel have went down tremendously and it's put a bind on a lot of continents. I figure that downtown would be included in that scenario, too.
Sir, we'd be happy to address that with anybody. We have not been approached by anyone in that regard.
Okay.
And Councilman Gilbert, some of the, the property owners and small businesses that I, I've heard from is that they really appreciate the responsiveness, responsiveness of the bid and the ambassador program being here. And although they're nervous about COVID and the effects on it financially, they don't know what it would be like if, if we weren't here and are just really anxious to see what tomorrow brings with us being here and, and how we can help folks rebound along with the city.
Okay, we need to move on. Councilwoman Coonrod?
Well, I'm moving on. I just, you know, to answer your question for me, I mean, we did, we voted as a council and said that we, we were gonna take the funds. We were gonna get the money. It was, you know, some few hesitations about it. Pretty much, it was a landslide vote. So I mean, to go back on that now, when we already said we agreeing to doing this. So I think we should just honor our word and accept the funds.
Is there anything else that anyone needs education-wise relative to the bid and the three aspects? Gentlemen, thanks so much. You'll know when we, oh, Council, Councilman Byrd. You're muted. You're muted. We can't hear you. Yeah.
Okay, there we go. Steve, how is it that the hiring works out with the ambassadors? How has that been going?
It's been ongoing to answer your question and be honest with you. I actually have two ambassadors here who've been with us since day one. I call them the Core Six. They've done a lot of the heavy lifting. We've been, we've been very fortunate to have some strong city partners to work as, work, work with us and, and, and know folks who are looking for jobs. And if the council would allow, I'd really like to give two an opportunity to let you know, we just got to full staff late last week to get our numbers to where they, they've been. So COVID's affected it. And, and you know, we've had people come in and then just for whatever reason, the job hasn't been for them or, or life situations have gotten in the way. And, and they've had to, to resign. So it's, it's, it's been a, a work in progress, but we're there. And again, if, if the council would allow or Madam Counsel, you would allow that these two ambassadors just take a couple of minutes to explain their experience here, I would appreciate that.
Mr. Steve, I would love for you to do that. We have two more biggies. Might we save that till we get closer to the vote?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there anything else relative to the bid, education-wise? Okay. Let's, let's move on. Oh, yes. Does somebody have something? Okay. So the next thing that you probably want to know about is, is three. Capital budget amendment, and that has to do with reallocating $150,000 from previously apportioned funds to Southeast Tennessee Development District so they can administer our arts, artist work program, supporting local artists. Are there any questions about that? You're good? Okay. Appropriating five, the second part of that is appropriating 531,000 of additional TPO dollars to CDOT to be used for work on Chestnut Street and Bailey Avenue. Is there any discussion about that? Questions? Okay. Then the last one is the one that's been most discussed, and it's proposed FY21 operations budget amendment to correct the general pay plan for civilian employees and appropriate, nope, then B, stop there. Adjust the pay plan. Mara, is that you? I don't know who from administration is Mara. Good.
Here I am. Hello. And I would like to be joined by Daisy Madison and, oh, she's already here. All right. Great. Thank you. Madam Chair, do you want me to just give a brief explanation if that's okay or?
Yeah, I think a brief explanation and then if folks have questions, respond that way, I think.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment is before you because we have made a mistake. A human error was made and we need to correct it. It's a pretty simple explanation. The wrong document was attached to the fiscal year 21 budget ordinance. Page 69 is incorrect, and we ask you to replace it with the document before you now. The general pay plan document attached to the fiscal year 21 budget is not the document that we presented to you. It is not what we discussed in the budget discussions. It contains increases in some pay, but not for all. It is a draft document. It's a working document, and it was the wrong document and we attached it. We told you that there would be no increases in pay this year in an effort to balance the budget at this time of reduced revenues, and that, of course, is what we need to do. This pay plan puts us in an unbalanced budget situation, and we need to correct that. I would appreciate you taking a hard look at that new document that we've provided you and act swiftly to make this correction so that we may move forward with the implementation of the fiscal year 21 budget. And that's really the explanation. As I said, it's pretty simple.
How did you reconcile? You said you'd get back with us. How did you reconcile what we did approve between then and now?
Yes, certainly we have, anyone who was due the federal pay plan increase from July 1, they will have retro pay back to July 1. So the people who are due the increase that we told you would happen, they will have that retro pay. Others, this is a, a pay plan that has ranges and it doesn't have stated pay amounts. And in talking with legal and HR, because it doesn't have stated pay rates and has ranges as, as described, it doesn't list out what people would make. So therefore, there are no other retro pay amounts to be considered at this time.
What questions do you have, council? Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mara, during the presentation of the budget, I at no time heard pay increases. I heard a hiring freeze and I heard no pay increases due to COVID and an obviously restriction in revenue. So I wasn't under the impression anybody was getting a raise, so to speak, or that we were even hiring new people. Is that, am I, am I making that assumption correctly?
Yes, sir. I am glad that you heard that because I certainly thought I said it a whole lot. So I'm glad that, glad that you heard it. We, we had it on PowerPoints. We had it in press releases. We, yes. We had it in conversation and emails to employees and employee groups. It is, we certainly do not enjoy being in that situation, but it is the situation that we are in that we are not able to do pay increases this year. And that is the budget that we intended to give you. The pay plan that was attached, just to add insult to injury really, is where we are. The pay plan that was attached was a working document that folks in HR were working hard on prior to COVID and looking at some pay scenarios and just attached the wrong document. And it went through finance, it went through our whole collaborative process. And it is a mistake and a human error. And again, our apologies. We're so glad that we found the error before it affected anyone's pay. And we are here to correct it.
Okay, final question, Madam Chair. We still have not furloughed any city employees during COVID?
We have not.
Okay.
We are, I am proud to say that. We are a city that has not, not had to do that. And we have not had to do that because of the management that we had, the financial fiscal management that we had during the first days of COVID and that we are going to continue very hard, very, very hard to have. It's not over. Our revenues are still being decreased and still being affected. And we are going to continue to try to keep all employees without a furlough situation.
Very good. Thank you, Mara. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure. Councilman Gilbert?
Yes, Mara, so we caught this before any payroll went out in July, correct?
Yes, sir. We did.
So no one received anything at all?
That's right.
Right first?
That's correct. Yes, sir. Right now, we're still on the, the pay plan of fiscal year 20. As soon as y'all can help us get this corrected, then we can implement 21, get the folks who are due the raise for the federal poverty rate, the increase related to the federal poverty rate. This year, the federal poverty rate went from 1238 an hour to 1260 an hour. So we're anxious to get those folks moved to that 1260 rate and give them their back pay to July 1.
So once, once we, if we pass this, we will notify the individuals that supposed to get the raise, that they're getting the raise?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Byrd?
Thank you, Chair. Mara, do we have, I know it's been a great thing to not have to furlough anyone. Do we have a plan in place to be proactive? That if that time does come, not, hopefully not this year or 2021, but if it did come before this administration, this council, do we have a plan in place to prepare people or give them a leeway to understand that, hey, this can't happen? Have we put anything like that together?
We have. We have a lot of different scenarios. As you can tell even from this conversation, this was a scenario. That is one thing that we do a lot of is scenario planning. So we do, we have a couple of different committees that have been working with the administration to help us, employee groups, employee committees, to help us look through implementation of if we have to furlough, of when we go to offices being closed, when we go to offices being open, just all those different types of things. So yes, we have had a couple of different scenarios around furloughs where, you know, it would, if it would start with part-time employees, you know, just all of those different things. So we do have those scenarios. Happy to sit down and talk about them with you. It's, it's not a, it's not a fun topic, but it, you know, it's all about money. We're, we are, we are, we do have a business side of what we do as well.
Definitely, definitely. And just one day soon, I would like to just see where we at on this spectrum of how it looks.
Glad to. Yep.
Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mara, I'm not sure what your documents look like, but do we not have big red letters posted across the top of the page, working document as opposed to final document?
We don't. I, I think that's a great idea for the future. Yes, sir.
I, I know in my construction, I, I know in construction business, we have many times different revisions to blueprints and we'll put final drawings on the ones that are the ones we're gonna submit and build by.
Yes, sir. It's a, it's, I'm not, it's not funny at all. It's a, it's very, very frustrating and embarrassing for all of us involved. And it's, we, we do need to have more controls, controls in place, internal controls in place. And we are working on that now to have better internal controls like ones that you just described. You're, will you be on our committee to, to help us?
No, ma'am.
Councilman Gilbert, is that a new question?
Yes. Have we, Mara, looked at the rest of the budget and make sure we have no other mistakes?
Yes, we certainly have, sir. We have spent a lot of time doing that. It's a great question and thank you for asking. We have. And I'm, I'm happy to tell you that we didn't find any others. So thank you for asking that, though.
Is that it, Councilman Gilbert?
Yes.
Good. Okay, is there any other education or anyone else you need to speak with or hear from before we go to the next issue? And that is deciding when the first and second voter taking are going to be taken. We've done the education. You all have to decide when these matters can go on the agenda. Is there any other information that you need? Are you still okay with the public hearing for the amendments? And if they do require public hearing, to be next week? require public hearing, to be next week?
I'm good.
You're right. Anybody not good? Okay. Are you okay with the first votes being on the 22nd? Is there anyone not okay with that? Second vote being on the 27th, and it's for all these areas? In other words, on the agendas?
29, Madam Chair.
Excuse me. 22nd? Yeah, 29th, you're right. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you. 29th. Okay, then with your permission, we'll go ahead and schedule them busily. And the last thing I need to ask you is, the public hearing's on the 15th, and I'm sure we'll have discussion at public input after our council meetings. Council, Councilman Chair Henderson, any time limits you want to think about?
Well, I would certainly leave that up to the discretion of the council, but I think in keeping with some of the past budget hearings that we've had or public hearings that we've had is possibly limiting it to two hours.
Two hours? So on the, on?
Unless the council wants less.
Does anyone have any, and the other one is, are we limiting before we use two minutes for the public hearing? Are you going to use two or three?
Madam Chair, I would turn the public hearing over to you since it concerns budget and finance.
Sure. The council decides time limits. I just, so last?
I would propose two minutes and a two-hour limit.
All right. All right. Councilman Gilbert, is that a new?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And what, on the public hearing next week, is it just on the subject of what we are discussing, or it could be anything else during that time?
Gilbert, so because they're budget amendments, the public hearing is only on the substance of those budget amendments. Doesn't mean that later in the evening, folks can't talk about anything they want. I just need some guidelines. So what I'm hearing is next week, when we're talking about the public hearing for the budget amendments, and that's the very first thing on the agenda, you want no more than two hours, and you want two minutes. Is that correct? Does anyone disagree with that? What's not up to me, Mr. Chair, is at the end of all our meetings, and this isn't my decision, are you still gonna go with three minutes a person?
Not?
We're gonna get a lot on this budget, yeah.
Are you talking about when it comes to persons wishing to address the council at the end of our meeting?
Yes, sir. I think people need to, can they speak both times?
I think our rule's limited to once a day, doesn't it?
Okay.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, one time a day.
One time a day. So they can speak at the budget hearing, or they can speak at public comment?
Okay. So as far as the budget's concerned, then, first vote will be on the 22nd, second will be on the 29th. Next week, there will be a two-hour time limit of two minutes each for the public hearing. Is there anything else? Councilman Byrd?
Thank you, Chair. To the body that's here now, Mara and Daisy, but to the council, rather, are we ever at any point going to address, not really a question, are we going to, I think we need to address the budget amendments that were presented to us at some point in time. That's what's gonna be a very huge issue. I think when this budget amendments come up, it's because we were presented with lots of budget amendments from our constituents. And our constituents asked us to look into it, go over it, and some of them had great points. Some of them had situations that made sense when it came to amending the budget. And to our constituents, when we hear them talking to us time and time again, it seemed like they felt deaf ears. And now this comes up and is being addressed and being taken care of by the staff, which are good points, and it makes sense for us to do or to address these situations. But it's just, this body seems to, to me, it makes us seem a little, I don't know, it just doesn't feel right. But I just think at some point in time, we need to have a discussion about those amendments that was presented to us, too.
Councilman Byrd, you can always bring up an amendment if you want, and we'll follow the same process we did today. Any council person can do that. So you're their vehicle. So I look forward to you doing whatever you need to do and bring it the same way we did this. Attorney Knoblet?
Yes, ma'am.
Your light is on. Your hand raised.
Yes, ma'am. The only reason I had my hand raised is the fact that there will be two ordinances on your agenda next week. One is the capital improvements provision, another is the operations budget. So I'm trying to make sure there'll be one hearing that will be two hours long, two minutes each to address either of those two budget amendments.
That's what, that's what we said.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, because there are two different ordinances.
Yes. Is there anything else? Councilman Oglesby?
Councilman, anyway, I just want to get some clarification on when the vote on the budget is coming up. It's on the three-week agenda. So is it safe to say that it's going to be up on our agenda on the 29th?
First vote is the 22nd.
On the bid?
Everything that we discuss today will be on the 22nd first.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I wanted to know.
And that's a resolution?
Yes.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Coonrod?
Thank you. My question is for Mara, because Councilman Byrd brought up a good point. And I think, and maybe Daisy, she could really help me understand it clearly because I want to make sure I'm communicating it to my constituents the right way, and I don't want to be misleading to anybody. So the reason that we're able to transfer from the capital budget to other is because it's a one-time thing. Can you explain that? Because when we're talking to our constituents, they're not trying to hear none of that. You know, because in their minds, we should be able to, and the DSA, they came with, you know, microaggressions and macroaggressions and asked for, you know, us amending the budget. And I'm really getting confused as to what authority do the council have as far as making adjustments to the budget. Like, we can introduce an amendment, but that doesn't mean that it's gonna be amended how we think that it should happen. So could you, if you don't mind, just explain it to me?
I'll give it a start, and Daisy may follow on as well. We, it's my understanding that y'all did have, my memory is that y'all did have budget discussions about the DSA amendments, and that y'all then chose to not move forward on those. So that's one memory of that. But then as to the actual amendment, our actual amendment relating to the 1.5 question, 1.5 for HCD Connect, that is a one-time expenditure that can be used, can be paid out of reserves. You can't pay ongoing expenses out of reserves because if you do that, then you're, then you're, you may not have the money the next year in your revenues to pay for it. So if you're, if you're trying to pay, if you're taking money out of your reserves to pay for something that you're not sure that you'll have the revenue for the next year, then you might have to take it away the next year, if that makes sense the way I've explained it. But it's best practice to use reserves for one-time expenses. This is a one-time expense, the 1.5 million.
Okay. So the one-time expense. I just, you know, wanted to make, because it's two different things. Like, we did vote against the DSA ask, you know, that was a thing, you know, I guess whoever want to bring it back up, we're about to be in our budget season on this next thing. So to me, I mean, they need to get ahead of it, email call, start putting their ask in. We can kind of look at it from that point. But what we're not able to do as a city is eliminate our police department. It's too many people, our seniors and a lot of other people who say, we need our police. But I do agree, maybe we should, you know, be ahead of it and look at other things that maybe we can try, then that's something different. But at this point in the game, amending it to say, to appease a group of people that they gonna run against us anyway, it ain't gonna stop them. So we just gotta be honest and make sure that we're doing the right thing to govern our city. And that's what it's about. We're in a pandemic right now. So.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there anyone else that needs to add anything or any concerns about budget and finance? If not, then with your permission, Mr. Chair, we're adjourned until 6 o'clock?
I will see you at 6:00.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Madam Chair.